I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the amendments for the 19th of January 2021. He wasn't here, so I made a motion to approve the amendments.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't even hear you say that. I'll second.
All fair and sound. The payroll amount of $174,558.61. Any questions on payroll?
No, I make a motion we approve payroll in the amount of $174,558.61.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound. And we need to acknowledge receipt of the payable claims accounts payroll report and as the amount of $164,826.25.
I make a motion we acknowledge the received payroll claims in the amount of $164,826.25.
And I'll second.
All fair and sound. Here's a little paper sign here if we get two parts behind me. Is this the first, Ruth?
Yep.
And we have claims for these sizable hair care agents. In the year, um, the amount of $323,486.96 have listed they're the highest claims. Henry, you know, or Henry, you want to go, what do you do in your hospital claim was $12,135? You want that before?
I don't recall.
That seems doubtful.
No, I don't think it was for the vaccine.
It could have been one wearing they bills, but I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that might be what it is because I had a lot of those this time.
Like bill in like months.
Ah, okay. I got you. So it could have been a combination of whatever you had accumulated that time period?
Yeah.
Okay. We've talked about this before, and Ruth, that's what's always funny about us having to do to sign off on the, on the claims because we don't know if it was legitimate claims or not, but we're signing these papers that says, oh yeah, this is all right, we're going to sign this, but we, we don't see the invoice, so we don't see anything about what the claims totals are. I think we put a conventional kind of, let's be, there's ever wrong with that, it's Ruth's fault somehow, so I think we're all covered.
I make a motion we approve claims in the amount of $323,486.96.
Second that.
All fair and sound. Hi, Julie. I'm guessing that's title you have in your hand?
Yes.
All right, we have some hand type checks. So you didn't want to explain what those are yet? Or can't be, you want to work with those?
I've got them right here. Honestly, it's for, um...
Got the Whiteville Middle Service?
Whiteville Middle Service Bill. There's all the paperwork.
Uh, according to Janie, there was something in there where they had to be paid within 25 days. Oh, no, no, that's not, that's never mind. That's different.
This side of the department also.
Yeah.
Derby?
Yeah, probably, yes, yep. Yeah, that's what we go to get, so probably be that, but you see that. And that was the amount of $2,990.56. So I make a motion we approve hand type check in the amount of $2,990.56. And then we have a check for the ambulance service for the, uh, new box for getting, and I would, uh, make a motion to approve the hand type check, um, for $66,898 for the ambulance service.
I'll second those.
All fair and sound.
The Heartland is Kim's.
I'm sure that was mine you just picked up.
Oh, okay.
Yours under the title.
All right, so, um, we have a Heartland payment system. Kim, why don't you explain that to us? I might be concerned about you, but we'd love to know what it is here, how we need to do.
Just gotta give you a background, we did have this last meeting.
Were you in it?
Well, we had it, but we...
Nick had some...
We didn't know for sure what was going on. Okay? So we didn't want to prove something unless we knew all the facts about it, so we asked for it.
I didn't know it was going to be.
Come to this meeting so we could get what we needed to decide whether we approved it.
What it is, all my vendors last year during tax collection, I nearly had a nervous breakdown. Nothing worked, nobody'd help, nobody knew anything, they'd blame us, Andy blamed them, they didn't know what the problem was, all of their...
Your vendors were doing what for you, or were they doing most of the...
For online payments, for credit card payments, for phone calling payments.
None of them were working. Oh my.
So, I bought through it all year. Well, in Ja, uh, December, I wrote them all farewell letters. I talked to GovTech, who has always done our mortgage payments, our escrow, and I asked them if they had any other kind of services, and they said they have all that. And I said, wonderful. Tell me about it, we discussed it, she showed me how it works, that way I just deal with one vendor.
And you vendors branch with them on the other side?
Yes, yes, they've always done a wonderful job. And the Heartland, I bought two new credit card machines, because even the swipe things that they sent us twice for point and pay never worked. But I bought two of those machines, that's $520. Cost accounting nothing on any of this, the customer pays it, and they pay that 3% for using a credit card or a debit card or whatever, and that's all it is. The contract is actually through GovTech, which we already have a contract with them, we're just adding on services.
Well, that was one of the things, we couldn't tell by the contract whether we were going to be out any money. We wanted to make sure we weren't signing, that we were going to have to pay $30,000, which we didn't know anything about, but we're not going to be out anything at all.
We were missing the back five pages, we only had the first three pages. Once I got the back five, you can see at the very back of it, it says the 500.
Why didn't you know what was going on here?
You have to, you have to collect the fees and then pay them, or the fees go directly to them?
No, they go directly to them, they use the process, exactly.
That's great.
Yes, yes, yes.
So you're just approving the signing, contracting the $500 and then paying basically?
The, for the, just the two credit card machines, which I've already got.
And you got that new question, so that's nothing new, that's...
Already got it, already came for it.
And you need a motion then to approve the contract with the Heartland for the payment system.
I make a motion we approve the contract with Heartland Payment Systems for Kim is presented.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
Thank you for coming, Kim. We weren't downing you, we just, we just didn't have enough. I didn't feel like I had enough to vote on, so thank you for coming and clarifying.
And Nick was concerned we only got half of what we were supposed to.
I heard they come see when all the rest of it got set up.
If you were missing pages, then I, I question heard you, I want you to turn us some pages on time.
Why isn't me? They turned me in.
Kim, thank you, we appreciate it. Hope for this goes smoothly for you.
I know, I hope this show be nice.
All right, we have a letter from Indiana Department of Transportation concerning a South Market script reconstruction project.
We're talking about artifacts that we found as part of the project, don't think that nature?
And what can do with them?
Yeah.
I think we, I was thinking we already decided we didn't want to, once they sent us pictures up before.
Right, they just required under the statute to notify any interested parties, and you guys have been deemed an interested party.
Yep, yeah, we signed on that when they first saw our project, because they have to, so many entities to, for the municipal officer to go through to make sure everything's covered.
I think most rusty nails, they sent us pictures, yeah. Broken pottery.
For whatever, yeah, that might have been, yeah. Okay, we have a letter here, I think you've probably already seen this, from the, one of the, um, gentleman out at Sheriff's Office, of the sheriff apparently who'd been having you do this, so we've got that, and you seen that letter too?
I have. I just told the auditor there's something you guys need to be aware of, that they sent a letter complaining about things, basically. There's nothing you have to take action on.
All right, this is a, this is serious, I think, thing, and we may see more of this, letter from, um, Jean at the prosecutor's office, this is coming to my attention, this letter from Steve, uh, prosecutor. Coming to my attention that Jean and Senator lost 62.5 hours vacation time for the 2020 calendar year due to COVID-19, Jean was unable to take advantage of her vacation time. By this letter, I am asking you to reinstate 62.5 hours back to her vacation time. If you recall, we did this with Bill, um, out at Sheriff's Office, and someone else who could not take time off, but Bill's case, he couldn't take time off because he was short of dispatchers, and he had to work, we had to have dispatchers. She had to have people, her job as well, a number of people out because of the COVID thing, so she had to work that time, couldn't use her time, so we granted that in the past due to the COVID requirement, that hers, like his, was one of those jobs where somebody has to be in that seat and take care of those, those payments in that cell, cell care stop. And, uh, so my recommendation would be that we, we approve that, so I make a motion that we approve reinstating those 62.5 hours, uh, to Jean that she can use them once this, once the time freezes, she can actually get people in the office to work, because she can do that.
I'll second that, make that motion that we reinstate the hours.
Okay, that'll work.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, well, fair and sound. Okay, thank you. Glad when this stuff is over. All right, now we have a list of appointments that we need to make, as Ruth was saying earlier, pretty much everything is unchanged, but we have a couple that we need to, to address. So, um, if you would go to, I have a couple lists here. The Health Department, for example, would be one, I just spoke to Lily, and she not on that board, but of course she works with that board, so she gave the people word. We have three, who's according to our components, their terms actually expire at the end of 2019, but they are still working on the board, that would be Dale Cooper, Mary Jo Harp Rider, and Amy McAllister. Lily said she knew from them that Dale and Mary Jo were both, uh, interested going on, but she had not talked to Amy, nor have I, but Amy has been on the board for 2020, so she must be okay with being serving on the board, so I think we should probably, uh, consider extending those three positions, and then we would have a couple more to do next year, but I would take care of this year's. Then if you drop on down to the cemetery board, we have a, an opening, and we have a replacement, Karen Lewis, uh, was on that board for years and years, Karen's just, she is amazing, she knew everybody, she knew through their kids, where their kids live, and how big the outhouse was behind the building, what year it was built, and she knew everything about all this stuff. And what a, what a, what a wealth of knowledge to lose. So, we really need two, uh, on that board. Now, I have, there's only boards you don't care getting active, but I got a letter from a man in Jesse Hollis, actually he called me first, and then I got a letter from a reporter in Terre Haute, down there, Evans, and he contacted me. There is a cemetery, um, that is not kept up, and I want to say it's a green township, I'm not sure that's right, and I was taught maybe, I think it was, but we have several being made, the number of cemeteries, little cemeteries around, used to be the townships were responsible for maintaining those. That law was changed, you know, about seven or eight years ago, we went through this, that that law was changed, that the township can, but they're not required to maintain cemeteries, so they can't use tax dollars to maintain some, but there are so many, and I mean it, hundreds of these little cemeteries just bowed around. The law was even changed back when we were looking at one down on Catlin Road, that where there should be a church there, and that church is gone, the cemetery is still there. And, uh, the law was even changed to where if a farmer owns a cemetery land, and that cemetery has not had any new inductees or interned or whatever, or interned, I guess is the word, people, that they can actually remove the stones to get them off that property and farm over that land, and it's not, is no longer required that that is preserved. The only thing at that time that we found when we were going through this was that the, um, landlord was responsible to make a reasonable, I think was the term used, a reasonable effort to document where the, where the stones were, who was where and where the stones were. But they could take the stones off, they could possibly leave them, put them someplace, and then they could just farm over that. Uh, the gentleman that Mr. Hollis has spoken to, who owns the property out there, and it's, uh, I don't get through major, I think it's Stewart, I think Stewart Major, I think owns the property, and he had crops planted there, so, um, he was kind enough to mow a path through his beans that a gentleman could get to where, he's got some family back there, I guess, and he's, I think he's older than me, so he, uh, he's not going to be dealing with this himself. He does have permission from the landlord if he wants to build a fence around it, maintain it, he's letting him say you can do that, but I'm just not going to do that, but I'll keep a path, even when I do beans next year, I'll mow down, then you'll find the beans and make sure you have a path there, which is really above and beyond, so Stewart really is doing above and beyond what the law requires. But, uh, his concern was, uh, do townships, he thought maybe the county responsibility to take care of the cemeteries, but it's not, it's a township responsibility, but even they don't have that responsibility to have the opportunity, and I just know that there's just so many that, um, they can't really get care of, so, um, that's, that's a really tough part of, you get those organizations, especially those churches, sorry, I forget names. And, um, so many churches that just fade away, they just no longer exist, and we have those all over the county too, and so many of them have little cemeteries attached to them, or we have family cemeteries where people would have a family for generations, but now they're just, they're just gone, they're no longer there, and I can take some of those myself. And, uh, so anyway, that's what that's about. So the cemetery board does come up sometimes, so it does need somebody who's going to be willing to do that, so Jim Wilcox has been on it for a long time, and he's the president. Berkey Davis, if you know her, she's very active in that type of thing. Randy Wright is the county historian, and then of course, like I was saying, Karen Lewis was on it, and she knew, she just knew all that stuff, where all the cemeteries were. We used to take a circle site trips, we'd load up and busker around the county, and she would direct those, and she would point out where cemeteries were, she would point out where schools were, where, where people who were well-known in the county, where they lived, and what years their house was there, and when it was torn down, it's just amazing stuff. But we actually have two spots that we can fill, that we can fill that blank, and we can fill apparent, but I had not spoken with anyone who would have any interest on that, so maybe if we could get something in the paper or something of, of, of interest, or anybody who's watching the video of this, if you know of anyone who might be interested in, uh, serving on the cemetery board, um, it's not that they go out and clean up cemeteries, although they have, and they can, it's mainly trying to unify their records, and I know that Jim has worked hard to digitize some of the records of who was where, I know Randy works hard at that, of, uh, keeping track of where military funerals are for people who serve the military, all the way back to revolutionary, we have revolutionary soldiers in our county as well, all the way through, so there are people who do those things, that's just not one of those boards that you ever hear about. So if you hear of anybody interested in doing that kind of thing, unless you guys have somebody in mind for today.
I'd be interested.
Okay, that's good to know. Well, we can do that right now, then I make a motion that we point a change order to the cemetery for, to fill the blank spot. No, that's a change, that's best to take Karen's place, you'd be a grand replacement. Thanks, Kim, I appreciate that. You guys any other evil cohorts that might want to join you, that we can put down?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Can I decorate them for Halloween?
Yeah, yeah. Randy has arranged for a walk through the cemeteries, and I know that they've done that in the past, where they go to cemetery and, and point out where who's where.
They don't want to get walked, that's good.
Because, you know, we all think we're going to make that great impression on society, and they're all going to remember us forever. Two generations, they will, they will, nobody will know you even here, they just won't matter. And that's what it should be, life is all, you know, we're not doing things to get that plaque on the wall someplace, you know, or another crown, another, okay, like a gold your crown or whatever, you just don't believe it's been done, so you're just gone. So for people to be willing to try to keep those going, that's great. Where my mom is out of West Union, it's just a little cemetery, little nowhere, there's no church there, it's just there, and, um, people don't make money to keep it going, but someday that won't happen, and so all of a sudden, and those go back to pre-war as well, so they're, they're there for ever and ever, and sadly, someday they'll just be gone. But even as we old folks walk into the cemetery, look at the old ones, you see the name, you see how old they were, they'll have clues to where they were, what they did, and that kind of stuff, so it's a, it's just a statement of life, it's just the way it is.
I'll second your motion.
All fair and sound. You're on.
I didn't think he's going to take a breath.
Five years.
It's a lifetime appointment.
Lifetime, it's lifetime.
It's a five-year appointment, I can't.
All right.
You have to be there until you're in there.
And we still didn't want to spot open, so if you know somebody that might, you might enjoy doing that kind of thing with, you need somebody to be active, it's kind of like this rock and sodic I was talking about, we just lost all of our folks, they've all gotten old, it's such a wonderful, and it's a wonderful cemetery, but I mean, look, cemetery, yeah, museum, but it's nothing there to attract the young folks, and so really, the old ones, I'm, I, I think we go to our meetings, I'm the kid in it, and I'm, I'm just having two coming in here, so I'm the kid, so, I've got a couple people I've talked to, and Larry Venus and I were working on getting a drive start for a membership drive, and, you know, of course, we can't do that honestly, and, uh, we were going to begin a drive, we need to do that, so if you guys got any ideas how to, how to work on a drive to get membership into the service, I was not like, you have to go do things, and, I mean, I do, I painted the building most of it last year and those kind of things, keep your eyes out, but do all the same, but, but it's, uh, it's worth keeping, and, uh, we just need to get people to be interested in that, so if you know anybody interested in that, or if you're interested in that, being on that board, you're welcome to do that too, so, sorry about that, I'm just interested in somebody really important too. All right, um, so we will keep that line open, then, if that's okay with you guys, will we hear some suggestions from somebody here to help?
Marsha Carroll from Maccat is interested, apparently.
In the circle, I mean, in the...
In the cemetery board.
Okay.
I don't know her, so I asked her to get ahold of you.
Who is it?
Marsha Carroll.
Do you have to spell that?
Yeah, Gary's one.
Oh, Gary's what?
Her head's what.
It's, it used to be Dunkritten, I mean, she still is Dunkritten.
Okay, well, that's fine, if you know she's willing to do it, but...
If she's willing to, we go and do it now, be done with it, if you've talked to her, she's definitely interested.
I would rather her get ahold of one of you guys, I might be able to...
Okay, okay, I'll try it. Great. Is that Kim? You got that, Matt?
Yeah.
Aren't you cooking gizzards tonight?
Yeah.
Well, I thought Gil saw that.
Well, I got to my meeting, I'll be down there later.
Okay.
I left there picking them. Next meeting, you guys give me your list, and I'll bring it to you.
All right, now we're talking. Sorry, sorry.
Monday.
I've lost some weight, it's just grease running out there. That's all it is, I've run out of grease.
Worst thing in the world to eat, that is not.
I have to find the gizzards in a blood mode, and I'll just tell you right now.
We don't have to leave them.
Okay.
They have to bring your own.
All right, um, we have an appointment that we've already made that doesn't show on our list, and that's Alcohol Beverage Commission, and that was Mike McKinney, he went on last year, but it's, that term that he finished up ends this year, so we need to appoint Mike McKinney for it, and I just popped him for a game here, so I know he's willing. Before I make a motion, I need to appoint Mike McKinney for another term on the Alcohol Beverage Commission.
And I'll second that.
All fair and sound. All right, you guys see anything else that we need to do? All right, then we need to, all the terms that end up in 2020, we just need to make a joint approval of renewing all of those terms that are still listed here, that's okay with you, instead of going individually?
I make a motion that we leave everything else the same, and appoint everything as is, unless you guys have an objection to it.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, I did say one, okay, but we just, we need to, Nellie Myers, her term's up at 2022, we need to get her on that, so they're all needed, okay, good.
All right.
Help me assist on this, probably a lottery, I hope I don't get beat here. Just give me a second, let's see what that, this is, I guess I'll shut up.
You guys are going to elect officers. Elect officers.
Oh yeah, we would, we would too. Oh no, it's not, it's nothing. See what this one is. Okay.
And I'll, I'll just go ahead then, and as far as electing officers, unless Bruce or Jim want any changes, I make a motion we leave things as are as far as the officers for the commissioners.
Okay with you?
Well, so I agree.
I make a motion we leave the three commissioner officers as the same.
Oh, yeah.
I agree.
All fair and sound.
Aye.
Lost my opinion here.
If there's no more new business, we're ready for old business.
There it is.
We can't take two meetings off for a moment.
Oh, it's tough to load up, it was 80 degrees, it was after Friday and Sunday. It's okay for the first night, we'll be stopping, and we have another night in Athens, Alabama, cold and wet, and then we go, downtown, it's our snow, so it's, it's like, what, what are we doing? All right, Julie, we are, I'm sorry, I have some business, you guys have any old business?
No.
Let me make sure I got nothing here. I don't remember writing anything there at this time, of course, I'm sure I don't, let me just see.
I think somebody's just watching on the internet and calling you, texting you.
Hey, watch this. Okay. All right, um, so Julie, come on up, that's all you need, I know you guys, you need to sign this title, so the box is all ready to go, you ready to pick it up?
Uh, Wednesday. It's not a box, it's a, the new chassis.
Okay.
We're putting our old box on a new chassis. Can I just text through my report, would that be easier?
That'd be fine.
So, in the, um, purchase agreement, we traded that chassis, which they've already got a buyer ready for it as soon as they get a title.
Correct, and we've already approved the check to be sent.
I know they changed these, it used to be seller sign on the front, I'm assuming I signed it back there, you guys sold anything, am I signing with seller versus seller?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I could have asked you, they've changed all those.
Don't you see they made sales?
If you would just put that in my box, when we go up on Wednesday, I'll have all the, you guys take everything with them, so you don't have to mail it.
Okay.
Thank you. I have to come over tomorrow, we have to, sorry for gas.
I'll bring that back up as soon as Jim's done.
Okay, that is, I'll be just reading that thing.
Okay, we need to go far enough into here on those appointments, there will be a change here. On the library, that'd be your next one down below there, right there. So we need to go back and do that.
Oh, where are the boards?
Oh, okay.
What Dan's talking about is on the appointments we just made, we left them all the same, but we were unaware, we had a letter from the Monazima Library Board, and they have a change they wish to make, so they want you to go and make that appointment if you would, Carol Wyatt was on there now.
And it's Kim Crowder that is...
On paper, please.
It will be, well, these, it was on there, two of them's on there before.
Okay, we only have one on our list. Was Carol Wyatt?
Nancy Sherrill and Laura Rook.
Okay, Nancy Sherrill, her term's ended 20, so if she resigns, appoint her mid-term, so who are they?
A second request for board members, Kim Crowder and Nancy Sherrill and Laura.
So Kim was last year's, but somehow... So Kim was last year's, but somehow with COVID, it kind of got glossed over, she had to be reappointed.
Okay.
But your two ones there on their second term are Nancy Sherrill and Laura Wilk, right?
Which we already, in appointing everybody, appointed them.
Right, so then Kim just needs to appoint her last year.
I make a motion to appoint Kim Crowder to the Monizima branch of the life.
And I'll second that, all fair and sound?
Aye.
Alright, okay. Vaccine, how's it going?
Is this thing going to be?
It's been a little bit crazy, so the first week we did, they told us that we would do a hundred vaccines, that's all they were giving us. I think we ended up doing three hundred. We were getting phone calls about how's it going, how's it going, they came out, did an inspection, and now we're doing five hundred a week. So apparently, the better you do, the more you get.
Okay.
So we boosted the schedule, we've added volunteers. If you guys know anybody that wants to volunteer, we're still looking for volunteers, medical providers and non. Because we have registration, which actually takes the longest. It's going amazing though, but we've had nothing to compliment about how it's going and how it's set up and the flow of traffic getting in and out. Our, our biggest issue that we've had is signage, Chris is helping, he got one of the big orange readers to put out by the road, but. Some signage around the building and things, we're having issues, weather-related issues getting it to stay. So, and it can't be permanent because we're still trying to work around the building, other people that are using it.
Right, what has come up, a couple of things, then the change where there's some already established contracts with people having auctions, and then there was a dog training show.
They're, they're doing an auction and a dog training at the same time, which is why we couldn't move back to the commercial building.
Right.
And we're trying to work around that, technically, the county has full power to say, no, nobody else can use it, we're, we're using it for vaccine clinic, but. We're trying to work around the people that already have a schedule, that's the fair board's main source of income.
It is, I appreciate it, I talked.
We don't want to take that away.
I talked last week a couple of times to the federal president and he appreciates the fact we're trying to work around it, so he understands and he can just cancel that and cancel the dance. In fact, the dance moved to the armory, so they have several things going. And he said, I understand that this has to be done, I said, yeah, it does, but we're not, I'm willing to work with you if we find a way to do it. And that's when I talked to you and sounded like you guys have got those, kind of worked out, okay, how about through April, so we should be, should be good.
We're still working on a couple of backup places to do it, but we've got one, I think, secured. And then we have some other options, we can change dates and things if we need to, as long as it's in advance, so we have some options we're working with.
And we're open Friday through Sunday?
Friday and Saturday only.
Friday, Saturday only, yeah.
Friday is nine to five, Saturday is ten to four. And we have set appointments, right now, we can't take walk-ins because the state's not getting enough vaccines to allow that. They did just move it as of today down to sixty-five and older, so they lowered the age range. And I think within an hour and a half, every appointment that they opened was booked, so.
Yeah, we had to book over in Danville on the sixteenth because everything was booked before we were, and, but that's, we'll get there, we'll get there. I think, I think you're doing great, I, I relate, I just, I know I carry on about the team we put together to work with this COVID thing, and I think everybody on it's done great. And it's been economic development as well as emergency management, emergency services. The sheriff's department, I mean, everybody's worked well, and I see that we're down to one, one point five now instead of two, so we are, we're lower. If you look at our numbers compared to those around us of similar population, we really done, I think, I think you guys have done an excellent job, so I appreciate every part of it.
Our vaccines are, the way that it's coming in, the way, unfortunately, it's statewide, so anybody from the state of Indiana can get on and register for a vaccine at our site.
Right.
But we have the ability to, some, there's supposed to be ten vaccines per vial. Sometimes there's thirteen, sometimes there's ten.
Okay.
So we had one that had like six extra doses in that. I, I don't know, CDC apparently doesn't monitor how much they put in each vial, but we get them and so we have the ability to call in people or if we have cancellations or something happens and somebody's double booked. So we have a list that we've been using and of course, we prioritize by age.
Sure.
And we, I think it started with about a hundred and twenty-five people on the waiting list that we had, and I think we've got it down to about twenty.
Oh, that's great.
So we've been able to, if we can't, if we can't get them under our clinic, we make sure we try to hook them somewhere else, so.
Great.
It's, it's working well, I mean, we want to make sure that our community stays safe, so it's going well.
Have you heard anything from the state about how long you anticipate this going on? I mean, they got to come back at twenty-eight days for the second. Are we looking mid-summer, are we looking till?
They want to have our vaccine clinics completely wrapped up by the end of June.
End of June, okay.
That's their, that's their hope, is to get everybody that wants vaccinated and needs vaccinated vaccinated fully by the end of June.
Okay, just what happens with inmates up in jail, did they get vaccinated?
Well, I haven't heard anything on them yet, so.
You haven't been contacted by the state? Oh, I'll call them tomorrow, because you should have something for your confined space. At least for your long term, I don't know about your short term, but for your long term, you should have something.
Okay, good.
Make sure.
Okay.
Everything else is going good, our, our call volume's come back down to average, which has been amazing. It was not good for a while, but.
How about COVID-related?
COVID-related has, we, we still have them every once in a while, but it's really slowed down, it's not, we, we've had a couple very acute cases in the last couple of weeks, but. We're not, it's not ninety percent COVID-positive calls now. Now, we're, we're slowed down to about what we were in March and April, where we were hauling, you know, just a couple of weeks, so. I know hospitals, since this has come way down with COVID patients and things too, so we're all, we're all starting to kind of see that plateau and very hopeful that it continues.
Okay, you think for us?
I don't think so, I think just the, the check and the title.
You got the title there, I guess you weren't getting.
He said you made a copy of that, so you're probably picking up.
Uh, there's had, Shannon made a copy of it today.
I don't know if we need to have one with the signature, Jim's signature on it, that I don't know. We're going to pick up the check tomorrow, so.
And I can just pick it up over there.
We'll just give it to you then.
Yep.
Henry, I only signed it, I didn't fill out the rest of it there as well, maybe you fill that out.
Uh, yeah, the, the sales amount is on that, I think it's fifteen hundred, it's on the agreement, yeah.
The allowance?
Okay.
Yep, that's the, okay.
We'll get it all filled in.
Thanks.
We'll have any free tomorrow to deal with.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Alright, is Chris here? Chris, see you. Okay, thank you. Are you holding up?
Good.
So everybody in the household, all recovered okay? You know what, let me know if you have some anything?
Nope.
Good.
Uh, currently, there is fifty-two inmates in jail. Collections that were received for January were one thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. That's for our normal fees, firearms permits, et cetera. Uh, January DOC housing, we had billed eleven thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. In your packet, there's our annual jail report that the jail commander puts out, that's just all the different stats, breakdowns. I think there were six hundred and sixty-five total inmates booked in.
Really?
That was two hundred and forty less than the previous year, but mainly COVID-related is why the total bookings were down.
I think I've asked you this before, and I think you told me that they're pretty much up to date, it used to be a struggle to get the DOC to pay, we had to wait months sometimes, in fact, is that pretty quick anymore again?
Yeah, they had, I don't know if that was last year, I think last year they had changed that up or maybe the year before.
Okay.
Or they have.
They stay pretty current?
They basically just took what the prior year average was and then just broke it down into twelve monthly payments. So yeah, they're pretty, pretty good on sending that out, but it's supposed to change kind of each year, they'll reevaluate and see where we're number-wise and then. And they, they've raised a little bit, a couple bucks in inmate, I think is what they've. So it's went up just a little bit on what they pay. I think they're up to thirty-seven fifty now.
Yeah, they are, yes, yeah. You're so satisfied with the lighting dealers we have out there?
Yes, yep, haven't had any issues at all.
Okay.
Um, you have the uniform crime reports, that's for the county plus all the towns that are broke down, just kind of what they've seen per month, per type of call.
Did that be slow on us last night?
I had a few and then, I don't know, about ten AM, they started hitting again, so I'm not sure what the delay was. It missed rush hour for some reason, but. Uh, we had our fire marshal inspection, that was last week, we didn't have any violations or write-ups. And then, the last thing I had was about, we're shorted a jail officer on our list at Cameron's, we had one that had previously worked for us. And we would like to hire her back, but due to the previous commitment with another job, she can't work full-time for the month of February, but she could work part-time. So my question is, is it okay to hire her and just kind of hourly or part-time basis until March when she's able to do it full-time?
I talked just about that earlier today, it's just that they would hire her full-time now, but can't, but she's willing to work part-time, no benefits, just part-time straight, part-time pay. And then go full-time as soon as she can, and I didn't think we had a problem with that, I want to make sure you guys didn't have a problem with that.
Problem with it?
Not aware of anything, it would prevent that, that's for sure.
And I don't know that.
If you can get somebody in there to help you out, I would think.
And we've never done that.
Help out, be better than that, but.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure, we've never encountered it before.
Do we need to take any action to approve that or do you just do that or just?
He can do that on his own, okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you, just wanted to be thorough with you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Is everything all working alright out there, everything's good?
Yeah, everything's good.
Good.
The three-month-old child that died, was that a? Road condition accident, was that due to slip roads or?
Yeah, the roads were bad, but.
Was it Amish?
Well.
I read it was Amish, but he'd been driving, so it used to be Amish?
Used to be, but he did have a valid driver's license.
I figured he probably didn't.
Yeah, the road conditions were a contributing factor.
Probably not much experience behind the wheel too, probably.
No.
Help.
But an adult died too, right, isn't that?
No.
Oh, I see, that's what you get either they did.
It, it was one family, but a juvenile was injured, had his arm trapped under the van, and then the three-month-old had died too, but it was basically one family, husband, wife, and nine kids, so.
One awesome thing. Anything you must?
Nope.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Justin.
You too.
Randy back there somewhere?
Nope.
Don't make excuses, don't count.
Okay.
But we got the.
Randy, do you have some force?
Yes, I do, if you have some time.
Will you, come on up, have a seat, have a seat, great. Listen, Greg, this guy, he's up. Main Street President still?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Again, I didn't take a step backwards, hasten.
Okay, I understand, you didn't show up to meeting, did you, so that's what happened to you, yeah.
Um, one of the, one of the things that last year was an interesting year because of all the cancellations, a lot of stuff we couldn't do. Um, however, last year was a really good year from the retail side. All the businesses seemed to do better than, than usual, so there was a good and a bad side of it too. But one of the things that continually comes up at meetings and in discussions is all of the various activities related to marketing, selling. Pushing Rockville, pushing Park County as a tourist destination, as a place to shop, how do we do coordinated marketing? And as we talk, there is confusion as to who's responsible for what and who does what. One example is, we're right now in the middle of putting together the hospitality directory. I don't know if you all know what that is.
Yes.
It's a big book that goes in all of.
About how long time do we have?
Right, it's, first question is, why don't we digitize that, and the next question is, why don't we have events on this and how does this coordinate with the Park County Guide that gets published every year? And is there some way we could get some kind of a coordinated effort across the entire county and all the towns?
Well, let me, if Pam Carter, if Pam Carter's still doing the Park County Guide, you might know if she does it or not?
Right.
I think she is.
Well, that's part of it, I think the, the real issue is, is, and I'm not looking for answers here, what I'm looking for is some way to start. We, we really think Park County is at a critical point in its development. A lot of things are changing, we've got a lot of new businesses in town, and we kind of want to take advantage of this and push things forward a little bit. We think there are lots of opportunities like what trade shows we go to, what events we attend, who represents Park County, how we publish and market ourselves, that's one issue. Then there are a number of issues around town, like signage that we want to talk about. So we're not looking for answers, we're looking for some way to start to coordinate all of the retail tourist events around the county, across all the different organizations. Perhaps it's a liaison from each one of the commissions that get together monthly or quarterly and talk about all the things that are going on. Perhaps it's another committee that gets formed that deals with, with the issues that come up from retail perspective or from a marketing perspective. I've got a list of, of opportunities that we've come up with at Main Street that say, hey, why don't we start to talk about signage? Why don't we start to talk about coordinating trade shows, why don't we talk about targeting demographics? Um, I can give you some examples, you know, we seem to do a good job of attracting motorcycle riders down here. We don't think that's going to carry the town as a tourist destination, we think we should go after antique lovers, people like to look at, to shop in different antique towns. We think we ought to start to target markets like Chicago and bring people down here from Chicago. How do we find the trade shows, instead of going to the Indiana Travel Show where we compete with Kentucky and Ohio and Arkansas and Tennessee? Why don't we start to target our demographics and go to, perhaps it's the St. Louis Show? Where we target an antique dealer show, where we bring a Park County booth down there, and we sell Park County antiques at that booth, not to sell the antiques, but to market the county. We think there's a lot of opportunity and we want to start to coordinate events across all the different committees and commissions that are going on here. And we're looking for help as to what the best way, I'm looking for help, as to what the best way to do that is.
What other, it sounded to me like it would be a combination, at least a starting point way between Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce, how do other communities do it? What kind of thing do they have set up?
Um, they do it different ways, I mean, in, in some communities, you know, there's, there's little things like the decorating, the holiday hometown holidays and the decorating of the planters. In some communities, that's done by the chamber, in some communities, it's done by the town, in some communities, it's done by some private organization. So it's kind of all over the map as to how they do it, a lot of it has to do with funding, a lot of it has to do with a lot of volunteers. We're not looking to push anything off on anybody, we're really looking to figure out how we do a better job of coordinating activities. So we don't publish a hospitality guide, we don't miss things, I just got another list of things that are getting published in Travel Indiana. Well, not everything that Main Street does is on there, not everything the county does is on there. So we're kind of, we, we've kind of got this shotgun approach to how we market the community. We're trying to figure out how we do a better job, we think, I think it's a critical timeline now to start to push that. And if we do a good job, we could move Park County up a notch from where it was and to where it could be next. Another, to be honest, another thing that came up with Main Street is, how do we focus on reopening Billy Creek? Now, should we get a committee together to do that, should we look at, at various commissions, is there some way the town could help, is there some way the county could help?
Isn't it privately owned, Greg?
Yeah, it is.
I don't know, I've heard different things, I thought it was a not-for-profit.
It's a not-for-profit.
It's privately owned, though.
No, it's not for profit.
Is it not for profit?
It's still not for profit, yeah.
That was ran by that family, the board was comprised of the family.
And I think.
But it is still not for profit.
I think the prime timing is now of that, because I think that the family would be ready to get out of that business and open it up, do the thing, so. I think what you're, what you're pushing right now is a good way to go, I, I think you, you just need to, some might step up, you, some might step up and say, we need to have a meeting of all the stakeholders here. Anybody interested with you, Main Street, Chamber, local businesses?
That's, that's kind of what I'm looking for, where do I get that started? I've got the, you know, the town council, I've got the commissioners, the Park County Board, the CDC, the PCI, the Chamber, we're kind of not sure who does what? Who's responsible for what, who's planning what? I mean, the Chamber might be planning something right now that Main Street doesn't know about, we're planning things that other people don't know about.
That is a.
We could both show up at the same show.
That is a struggle that's been going on for a long time, since I was a young guy, I've been doing this about forty years since. We tried forty years ago before the technology to at least hit a county calendar, so we wouldn't have competing organizations having the same thing on the same day, there's so many days throughout the year, why are we both having the same? Something going on the same day, it's just spreading that out, so I think your approach is just right, it's just a matter of who do you, who do you bring to the table? Uh, Commission, Vitters Commission could certainly be involved in that, we are more on the festival side of that than we are with the, the day-to-day marketing, the downtown marketing, the business marketing, that's not what those tax dollars are intended to do. But we are tourism-driven, so tourism-driven would affect what you guys do, so I think certainly make, involve the Commission, Vitters Commission with that discussion to see what kind of ideas. And then, we've got a great marketing director on Commission, Vitters Commission, and he also would know about Billy Creek, he did a tremendous job of Billy, we got website, Doug, Doug is probably the mega-marketing person in our region. Love him or hate him, and usually people fall on one side or the other, is that right? And, but I tell you, as far as marketing goes, that would be the guy to talk to, he is a man of ideas, you don't follow up on him, so. I've known Doug through various organizations for forty years, I was on the board of Billy Creek, and he ran it out there and it was. Well, it was well-managed, got consumed by other things that were beyond his control. So I think you're, I think you're exactly right. All those people you have on that list, the money just ran off. I think you just need to have a, get, you have to sit down and start asking people, how can we do this?
To get that first sit-down happening, do I invite? Do I send out invitation to all of you and say, we'd like one representative from commissioners to at least be knowledgeable, partner, whether you attend in person or whether you attend, you know, through the minutes or something to comment on it? Because we're going to need input from everybody.
Sure, I think.
But I don't want input from everybody. I want input from-
And you might start like you do now, if you got two or three small groups that you want to bring together, then sit down with them and say, now, who do you think we need to talk to? And they're going to have different ideas of people to bring. So the next step would be a little bit larger group than that. Maybe start creating some kind of a trade union or trade band or something to try to get those things to go. I think it's, I think it's a great move. It's a good path to go.
So if I came to you and I said, okay, we're going to form a, I don't know what to call it, but a Park County Tourism Board or something?
Kind of coalition or something.
Coalition, yeah. Something that makes sure it's, then you would, you would, I sent it to you directly and then the first meeting and you would assign somebody who-
My thought would be, we would probably just come individually personally, not as an official act by this board to send somebody to that, but we would certainly go, I think, you just go as an individual body and see, see what it looks like and what it's, what it's looking like. And I don't know that the county would have a role in that. I don't think that the county would be a funding body or that kind of thing at all. But I think as individuals, we're all involved with stuff and we would have interest in helping.
Yeah, we're not, we're not necessarily looking for funding, although that always helps. But we are looking for, from the county's perspective, you do host events and sponsor events. So having that coordinated with everything else, all the other groups is an important piece. That's at least one piece of it.
Yeah, now the, the little bit of edge on that, which makes us different, that most counties, they do most county-wide things. Park County Incorporated was created back about 57, I think, and their purpose was to promote the Cover Bridge Festival. Then the Maple Fair came along about 1960, 62 something. So the county itself has never been involved as far as tourism. Now, I tried several years ago, when Kathy Harper, I was working for PCI, and she was ill and she didn't have health insurance, I tried to get that to become a county entity. I think Park County, as long as we're having opinions, I think Park County is really lax in not having a tourism office and a tourism officer that's in the courthouse, eight-four every day, answering phone every day, doing those things. Where tourism was our number-two industry in the, in the county, and we don't have that capacity to do those things. We rely on a, on a not-for-profit to do that, that kind of a thing, but that was convenient. Sixty years ago now, sixty years ago to do it that way.
Who does, who does PCI report to?
That's their, that is part of the-
They're an entity?
They're an, yes, they're an incorporated entity, and they have their own self-protection board. They don't have to have permission from anyone to replace their board members or collect their office.
And how are they funded?
They are funded from fees they collect during the Cover Bridge Festival, which most people don't understand. The only money that goes to Park County Incorporated for the Cover Bridge Festival is that money that is generated by those vendors who set up on the square.
The TMLs.
And, and the TMLs don't, don't go to PCI, TMLs come to the county. Then the county now, got this about five, six years ago, helped PCI because they were hurting for money by not giving them money, but taking on some of the bills of the Cover Bridge Festival. We pay for the tent, we pay for the, we pay for the triceremials. So we take some of those bills and pay them from the TML money. But the TML money is never sufficient to leave a profit for the county. That money was intended to pay for the added police protection, we added ambulance service, all those things, which it does. It comes pretty close to paying for those.
You lost me someplace there. How does PCI get funded?
Just by the-
Just?
By the rental booth fees, booth fees on the squares are our only source of income.
That's it?
That's it. Used to be, then you'd be a member of PCI and be able to sign the festival, but that died long before me, probably 30 years ago. If you were going to participate in the festival, you had to be a member of Park County Incorporated to be allowed. But now you're talking about people setting up on their own private property, and I don't think they're joining the organization. They had to set up on my property, sell during that time period. We'll do some other time period, no, we'll do it during your time period because that's where everybody comes, and you're kind of thinking you can do about that. So those kind of fell apart. They used to get money from the TMLs, TMLs would go to them. They kept raising the price and raising the price on that, but finally, I think, I think Hazel, this auditor at the time, came to commissioners and proposed that the auditor's office takes care of that because it's county tax, which it is, it's county fee, not a tax, but county fee. And so now that money was changed then, to go, instead of going to PCI, went to the county because the county did, was paying for the police protection and the ambulance service. You know, we have ambulances set up during the 10 days in different, different counties. So the money, money in TMLs is never sufficient to pay those bills. A lot of people think that.
That's another question is, is what does PCI then do since they haven't got a lot of money?
Well, they, they advertise, their job is to advertise it. They arrange for the, they arrange for the festival. They're the ones who set up all the contracts for getting the tents, getting the contracts with the vendors and doing all those things. But beyond that, now-
Just on the square, though?
Just on the square. Now, it's Health Department, which is county-wide, because they have to have health permits every place. They have to have the trans-emergency license, which is run by the auditor's office. They go out and make sure that the person has paid the TML.
How about CDC?
What about the Commission of Business Commission?
How does, yeah, what is that roles and responsibilities? How do they fund it?
They, they are funded by innkeeper's tax dollars.
Okay.
What is it from Park County? Is it 5%?
12%.
12%?
The pill tax is 12%.
The, the hotel tax, the overnight tax? Okay, so that money goes to the Commission of Business Commission, and our responsibility then as CDC is to promote tourism. So we run all of the festival ads, festival guides, we send people to the show, like you're talking about, we send people to those shows. In fact, I think everyone's gone to some of the shows.
Yeah, we've gone, I manned a booth a couple.
And so those are the kinds of things, their, their job is-
But CDC is part of the county?
That is a county entity, yes.
Does it fall under the commissioners?
Appointed by the commissioners.
Appointed by the commissioners.
And, and the town. The town has two incumbents, I think, out of the eleven? I think the town has two incumbents out of the eleven. So then all that, all that money then is spent on promoting tourism, doing the things we do. And really, everybody ought to come to a CDC meeting sometime to see the type of marketing, the extent of the marketing that this marketing committee does. I mean, we're in magazines and promotions out of just, I mean, they've done an amazing job. And I've seen that more over the 20 years that I've been involved with this kind of things too. Back when we used to print coupons in our newspaper, to have them bring the coupon from newspapers, see what area they come from. Now with the analytics you get from Google and other places, you can tell how old this person was, how many kids they got, what they bought while they were here, and where they came from, and will they come back? So the opportunity now with the analytics that are available are pretty amazing. You talk about aiming for different, different-
Demographics.
Demographics, Mike, you can display that, you can shrink that down to whatever demographic you want and go right after that bank.
I know, I think it's, it's, personally, I think it's time to start to shift some of that and target some different audiences, only based on my experience of what I see, you know, at the old jail and what I see coming through town and stuff. I think we're missing a huge opportunity. 50% of the business of the old jail every year comes from the motorcycle show that we do every year in Chicago. And I would say 70% of the customers at the old jail would come from the South suburb of Chicago and northern. Very few people drive north to vacation. You know, we don't get a lot of people from Kentucky, we don't get a lot of people from, from south.
Lot from St. Louis, lot from St. Louis.
Lot from Champaign.
Lot from Ohio.
Yep, a lot from Ohio. So I think we ought to, we might want to start to target it, especially with all the antiques that are in town. It's a great time to start to target. I have a lot, I'm from Chicago. So when my friends come down here, they're amazed at how cheap things are. Go to Sawmill and buy live-edge wood that they can't touch in Chicago. And I keep thinking, we ought to have a Park County booth up in Chicago every month that just-
We used to turn one, we used to go, but then nobody would go. I used to go to-
Well, that's another problem.
To the old big building there in Corristake.
In Chicago?
Corcoran Building, you do want the Corcoran Building there.
Anyway, we want to get that started. We at least want to start to form the foundations of it this year so we can- again, I think we're at a critical point with all the antique stores in town, all the businesses, that we've got a lot more to sell. Need a couple of good restaurants, but, I mean, a couple of high-end restaurants.
That's always been a struggle. Well, it's tough to get them to keep going because most of us just don't do that very often. We go for that first month or two, then it kind of starts dying off, we just start to keep going, so.
Tough demographic. Alright, we will keep moving forward, just wanted to let you know. So when you hear something from us, it's, it's more this coordinated effort to start to talk about how we coordinate all of our efforts this year.
And I'm not so sure there wouldn't be funding available. I know this state has really changed, and you should come to CDC and bring that to-
I will.
CDC because they're all active people, and-
Main Course will talk a lot, so.
I know the state has changed a lot in tourism value being available for exactly that kind of thing. Because now, the whole buzz now and everything, everything city has, it's all regional stuff. So the more we can reach out, and it's just tough getting beyond that competitive thing. Montgomery County just reached out, commissioners just reached out to see what they're getting a regional entity that they can be a part of. They, they were pretty effective by not having the Cover Bridge Festival. It's all those things that you don't realize how, where the generals go, you just don't know all of the wall for that. So I think they're kind of, just need to-
Okay, so you have your own.
Just start out that path to get people, they're all going to have ideas and-
Alright, thanks.
Back at County Highway, just need sign, let's say-
Contract with Duncan County for stone?
For stone, but I think, I think they switched hands.
All I know is they brought that up, said-
I think that's, it wasn't with the packet we originally, I'm pretty sure Park County Aggregates switched hands because we actually just finished a credit app for them yesterday.
Okay.
Friday.
James just brought that up and asked me to bring it. Do you guys sign?
Do I need to sign both these places? As applicant, as well?
I don't have the copy of it, so I don't have-
This is the one- This is the one where they want the invoice to be paid within 25 days.
Right, and there's a 1.5% interest per month if you're late.
Right.
And then there's hold harmless language in there that says that you're going to hold them harmless as to any claims that may result as a result of disagreement.
So what do you think?
It's just in there, you're either signing it and holding them harmless or you're not. I mean, it's kind of-
Holding them harmless from what?
It says from any, you see, this is the thing that we keep getting in all these contracts that are coming in. They want a contract to make it so they're held harmless no matter what happens, like we ran into with the oil company or-
It could be a piece of, they've dropped on top of the truck with a payload and they just don't want to be liable when you pull in their place.
So it says applicant agrees to hold PCA harmless against and pay all of PCA's costs and expenses, including a reasonable attorney's fees involved in collecting account, enforcing this agreement, or in defending or resolving any claim made against PCA by applicant or any other person arising out of or relating to PCA's dealings with applicant. That's the part of-
Right, so we go into their place and get loaded up and they run into our truck with the, with the loaders on us?
That's the part of the contract I don't like. If they strike that language out of the contract, it should just be anything arising out of that agreement, not like as far as your interaction with each other.
The only, the only other way them companies is getting someone to deal with you without having a credit app, though, is you go in there and pay for it with a check every time you pull in there, you go grab one, that don't work.
And the 25 days is, to me, is scam because they know we're on 30 days.
It's outside, yes.
They're going to get one and a half percent every, every, for another week or two there.
So I mean, unless they're going to change their agreement, you either have to do business with them or you have to not do business.
Do you want to approach them and then tell them we're on a 30-day and ask them if they will change it before we sign it? Like, this is not killing us right now.
It's just like this other contract I have here from Heritage where it's got all kinds of hold harmless language and all kinds of things that, you know, as an attorney, I'd advise you not to sign.
You, you're right, one for us, they hold us harmless no matter what happens or whatever they do.
So I mean, it's almost an unconscionable contract because there's no way you could possibly know every single inch of the life.
For whatever interaction it's set with, with the person here.
So, I mean-
I think you're right.
I would just have Randy tell them if they take that last part out, and I can tell them that because I told them that on this other one. If they take that out, they still can, you know, to the winner goes the attorney fees, is usually what a typical contract would say. If it's litigation and you want attorney's fees, whoever wins the litigation gets the attorney fees.
Okay, it's-
Yeah, I, I'll leave you guys there.
How much do we buy from them? I thought we got most of our stuff from Park County.
Yeah, this is the first I've ever heard of these people.
Well, this is a new company. They got bought out, and they actually are about two-thirds of price. The stone quarry's been there for a long time. But we do occasionally buy white rock. This is not a dire emergency that this gets signed today, I will tell you that because when we sign the other agreements, it ran from-
We got most of our stuff cranked.
But there's no white rock over there. This, this is all limestone.
So I mean, to me, it's fine-
Ripper rap, anything you need to, but there's all-
I agree. They're going to book any contract, whatever they think they can to get you to sign, so you just-
They just count nobody reading their contract.
There's probably three different companies we buy limestone from. This is not the only one, but-
Yeah, but I might work on that.
If they strike the any other person language and they make it 30 days, that should suffice for you guys' purposes. That would be my opinion.
30 days to do it, the way you rotate?
Well, you say that because you're the one that does the payables. I mean, whatever.
It's 30 days from the time they get the bill, so if you get the bill the first week, you got at least 30 days till it comes out again.
Yeah.
So I guess that could go back inside. If you-
Well, and I'd also say 30 days of receipt.
Yes.
Not a, or 35 days of mailing or whatever.
Well, it'd be more than that, though. If we get a bill the second week of the pay cycle.
Right, so I mean-
30 days to cover it, though. If we get that, if we get that bill the second week into a pay cycle, we're going to pay it at the end of the month, so it's going to be less than 30 days.
Yeah, 30 days.
So long as we're 30 days, we're okay, yeah.
It's those ones that we'll get at the end of the month where the commissioners meeting is-
But it's a 31-day month, so you don't get 31 days, that can pay you one and a half percent on it.
Right.
Well, she's got her email on here. I can email her and express our desires, but I mean-
Appreciate it.
If she says no, then it's, do you sign or do you not sign, and I'd recommend you not sign.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, but I would say if you look at those, I would say it was probably the same that we get stuff from.
You're, you're probably right. I just haven't seen those. I saw this one.
Who were these people before? Do you know? Do you remember?
Okay, you might have got most of the good to talk about.
Most of ours from the-
Nick's got one of them, and I have one more thing.
That's a resolution for tax sale properties. We did this last year too and the year before. When we have a tax sale, the commissioners retain a lien of tax sale if nobody bids on it and it's not redeemed. This transfers those tax sale properties to the redevelopment committee in order to be able to be sold at a, basically a commissioner's sale is what it is. So this would transfer from the county to the redevelopment commission, those tax sale properties attached on exhibit A.
Only those that we received, no other conditional sale.
These properties are different than what we voted on the other night?
Nope, that is the list.
Or these are the properties we took bids on the other night?
That is correct.
So that's a resolution just authorizing transfer if there were bids on it or there's a-
What number are we up to?
Number one?
Oh, yeah, this is- You guys, if you didn't do anything while we were going on that.
Yeah, we didn't do anything, heck no.
Well, I make the motion and then we adopt Resolution 2021 dash one for the dealing with transfer of tax sale certificates from the county to the redevelopment commission?
And I'll second that.
I'll bear say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Will we sign this one?
Yes, that was a- Either I can take the original, send you a copy, or you guys send me a copy?
I'll send you a copy.
Henry, whatever you prefer.
I'll send the copy over to her.
And then Nick's work starts. He'll need a copy as well, Henry, Nick will.
Put it on my list.
And Jim, I had just one other thing just to bring up for all of you to start thinking about how you want to handle this. I was chatting with Nick ahead of time about the county, if there was a green energy ordinance in place. And he was telling me you have one for wind turbines.
We put a moratorium in place. We didn't develop a comprehensive plan on how to go about developing that. We just said that until further notice, you can't do that.
So we're getting inquiries about solar energy deals, solar panel deals. So my suggestion to you is to start thinking about if there is an ordinance you'd like to put in place related to those, such as they can't be an extra cover bridge, or they can't be here, or, and they have several things, but just-
Probably need a moratorium on those as well.
A suggestion to you to start thinking about how you want to deal with those.
Nick, can you write that up? I'm going to do that.
We only done all windmills before, I think, didn't.
The reason we did it was because Montgomery County had, they didn't have anything to do with it. And this company came in and they started doing windmill activity on their own, and it was in the wrong place, wrong time, and the county's got to stop them. And then they sued the county and they lost a big bunch. We didn't make sure that didn't happen. So all Montgomery County's recommendations surrounding counties passed a moratorium saying that, we don't know what we're going to do, but you're not going to do that. So if you, before you do anything, you need to come and get approval of planning permission and permission before you start doing this. So you don't get caught with, well, there was a little rule saying I couldn't do it, so I went ahead and did it, but now you're telling me I can't. So who's going to pay for that? So we probably need to have a solar field as well.
Right, so that'd just be for solar fields, it's not if you want to have, you know, solar energy at your home or things like that. It's just if you want to have a mass solar field that you operate.
Coming back from Florida, more this time than before, I'm saying more and larger solar fields in there. And I have no problem with those at all. I like windmills, but the, but the solar fields, I think it's just sitting there.